Thank you for coming this evening. This is the Albany City Council work session for Monday, May 22nd, 2023 at 4:00 PM. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And can we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor McGee.
Present.
Counselor Novak.
Here.
Counselor Newton.
Present.
Counselor Kopczynski.
Here.
Counselor Montague.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here. Next on the agenda is business from the public. No signups. With that, would anyone in the chambers like to address the council or business from the public? Hearing none. Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is a mental health month proclamation by me on page three of your packet. Thank you. Mental Health Month, May 2023. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being and whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our community and whereas with effective treatment, people with mental health conditions can lead full, productive lives and whereas each business, school, government agency, faith-based organization, healthcare provider, veterans group, and community member has a responsibility to promote mental health awareness and support prevention efforts and whereas COVID-19 pandemic has had profound impacts on the mental health of people of all ages now more than ever. It is critical to reduce the stigma that commonly prevents people struggling with mental health issues from seeking help. And whereas Lynn County Mental Health Advisory Board is emphasizing that there is no health without mental health by being involved with public service announcements, health fairs, public speakers, and various trainings regarding mental health issues. Now therefore, I, Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor of the City of Albany, do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Mental Health Month in the City of Albany, Oregon. And also, I call upon residents, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Albany to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health. The steps our residents can take to protect their mental health and need the need to appropriate need for appropriate accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. And witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 22nd day of May 2023. Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor. Thank you very much for listening to that. Next is a mental health presentation. Albany Police Chief Marsha Hardin and Kirsten Glazer, is that pronounced correctly? From Albany Police Department and Nova Suite, and Tanya Thompson of Lynn County, Lynn County, is a verbal presentation. The floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We'll wait for, oh, good job, Kinsey. Thank you. It's time to report out on how we're spending our ARPA money for our mental health intervention specialist position that we created under the last budget or the current budget, but a year ago. And we brought Kirsten in in November, I believe she started in November last year, and you'll be quite busy. So we'll give you some numbers here, and Kirsten or I can answer any questions about how the position relates to our partners over at Lynn County that will follow us in this presentation. The two are very much tied together, but the nice thing about Kirsten's work is that we are going well and beyond what we had anticipated with this position, not only reaching out to people in crisis, but also some follow-up support for people that are really struggling in areas where we have somebody dealing with declining cognitive abilities, working with our code compliance officer and such to try to help people who are coming on the radar for code compliance issues that might be tied to mental health. So, Kinsey, next slide, please. So, the position was added again in late 2022 using some of our American Rescue Plan Act funds or ARPA funds. It was brought to the attention of the ELT, the executive leadership team. There's a specific carve-out in those use of those funds for mental health services for the community. So this is a great opportunity to dedicate a city position to the support, mental health support of our own residents. And then Kirsten came over from Lynn County. She spent 25 years, I believe, at Lynn County. We're glad to steal her from them, sorry. And she was able to hit the ground running because, one, she was already embedded with APD, and then she knew a lot of our systems. So, next slide, please. So the mission of the position, one more, Kinsey, please, is one to provide outreach, support, and referral to our community members in crisis. So we will get often a nine-on-one call or a call that comes in through our business line of a person that is in active crisis. They might be suicidal, they might be talking about ending their lives, they might be spiraling in depression, a whole range of things. And we have used the embedded position that we had with Lynn County for years prior to do a co-responder model, meaning that Kirsten or whoever's in that position would either go out accompany officers or if the risk level was low, meaning the person had no weapons, they weren't a threat to other people, they weren't in a public space, things like that, then the mental health responder could go directly and take the police officer out of that equation. There are times where you absolutely have to have an officer present before, to stabilize the situation before the mental health intervention specialist comes in. Next slide, please. Also, Kirsten has stepped into the unique role of training city staff and various organizations on how to interact with people in crisis. One of the discussions we had is how we're going to pay for this when our ARPA funds run out. And part of that is to partner with other city departments that have services that interact with people in crisis or people struggling with mental illness, and how the departments can support each other. So Kirsten has been instrumental in doing some de-escalation training and just overall informational trainings for our city staff, libraries, parks, city hall staff. She just did a de-escalation training, I think, last week here, and the fire department as well. A lot of times, the fire department and the police calls interact. So a big part of what she's done is training other city employees on how to effectively deal with people that are struggling with mental illness. Next slide, please. Also, it's a part of training staff. One of our missions is that every police officer in this city gets 40 hours of crisis intervention training. It is mandated in the state of Washington. I had to have it when I was up there, and I believe the state of Oregon should do the same here. Unfortunately, it's usually unfunded. Both the police chief in Corvallis, as well as myself, have committed to making sure that 100% of our response officers have this 40-hour training. It's not cheap, and it's not easy to put 66 employees through it. So we're committed to it because we believe that's one more tool that the officers will have that will deter or deviate from use of force in traditional police applications. Next slide, please. Also, Kirsten's been very instrumental. She was a member of our peer support team when she worked at Lynn County. And our peer support team is a team of specially trained employees that are given the tools, resources, and training to support other first responders that deal with traumatic incidents. This is very key because we go on, probably all of you have had experiences where you've had some sort of traumatic experience in your life. Fortunately, that's fewer than five. Most first responders see hundreds in their career, and that leaves a mark. So we have a specially designed team that supports other first responders and community members as needed, but other first responders in their time of need, because we're all about wellness at APD. Kirsten was on that time, on that team when she was with Lynn County and has transitioned over to that team and has been very busy in that role. Next slide, please. So how has she been doing since November 1st? Again, there is times where she was gone, she was in training and things like that. As you can see, she's very busy. I think as a member or counselor on the last council that approved this position, it might have been you, Counselor Novak, who said, "Why aren't we doing two?" And I couldn't agree more. I think our colleagues at Lynn County would agree that this is a huge issue in our community, and we need to put as many resources as we can. Kirsten often has work waiting for her when she comes into work. In fact, I know she did because she wasn't sure she was going to make it here because she was on a call. But as you can see, out of those 154 calls for service, 42 were specifically mental health-related calls, 34 were follow-ups. So an officer goes and contacts somebody in the middle of the night that's dealing with some mental health issues and didn't rise to the level where they had to be taken to the hospital for a mental health hold, but they needed some care. And so Kirsten will come in and do that work on behalf of our citizens. 13 welfare checks, whether she went alone or officers went, these are people who have not shown up for work or sending messages to other friends and family or work saying it's not worth it anymore, something like that. She can do those welfare checks. 14 straight suicidal calls, suicidal persons' calls. Unfortunately, it's a big issue that's tied very much to mental health. 10 assist other agencies. So she could be going with Albany Fire Department on a call, she could be going to the schools to help them with a student that's struggling, she could go and help one of our sister agencies in law enforcement, she'd go help Lynn County Mental Health. Any number of these things could do that. And this is not an all-inclusive list. I wasn't going to list out all 154 calls. And she assisted on six police officer hold calls. And what that means is that the officers have seen a behavior in the person they're contacting that leads them to believe that they are at extreme risks to themselves or other people, and they can be taken into custody under state law for a mental health evaluation. That has to be, there's a lot of documentation. Then Lynn County will come in behind us and deal with that individual once they're cleared at the hospital. So Kirsten's very much a part of that and being, using her skillset as a master's-level social worker to help officers in those calls. Next slide, please. These are the other many things that she does. She attends meetings where other community issues or community programs intersect with her work. So she sits on Lynn County Homeless Task Force. She's an instructor for the CIT program, which is a crisis intervention training. She does de-escalation training for both city staff and other entities, committee partner response team. She is here and present when we have mental health court at the municipal court. And then she helps direct future trainings for the crisis intervention training, and that's a regional thing. So we have a voice in the regional team. And she sits on the Lynn Benton County Threat Assessment Teams where we, people rise, you know, they're making threats to active shooter-type of things, and are they a threat? And so that team meets. Did de-escalation training for Albany Fire Department, mental health strategies for library staff, Lynn County Jail, Parks and Rec staff, et cetera, et cetera. She's also very well-respected and tied to our shelters. Next slide, please. And with that, I'll take any questions, or Kirsten can say a few words about her transition from a county level to a city employee because the position's not quite what you thought it would be. So I'll let you say a few words, and we can answer any questions.
It's way busy.
Well, I think the council would love to hear from Kirsten. We all agree? When we said first, Chief, thank you very much for your presentation. Kirsten, you have the floor.
Okay, well, I just was going to say that I love working at Lynn County, and I love being able to team. I think both departments were teaming together. They very much dovetail. So the communication that I still have with my colleagues at Lynn County Mental Health is crucial to doing the job that I'm doing now. In addition, I think it's really important to share that over the years, we've developed this kind of side team between Adult Protective Services, Chris.
Chanel.
Chanel, got it blanked out. Shandell, Hillary, Kay with Albany Fire, four of us have developed a kind of a side team that we're really expanding right now. Often, when Shandell goes out on a call, it turns into a mental health call usually and/or an elderly person call. And the four of us go out into the field together a lot and have done some really successful resolving of issues, getting people hooked up to services, getting families involved. And it's kind of my favorite part of the job because it's not straight mental health, it's complicated and weird, and how are we going to resolve these things together? So the four of us have developed our own side team. We meet once a month, community partner team, and Hillary gets calls, she emails me, Madeline Stone with APS, she emails me, Chris emails all three of us, and we go out and address a lot of those issues together. So that's part of the growing, part of the call of the job. In addition, the training is super fun. I didn't think I would like doing that as much as I am doing it, but I'm getting, every time I do a training, I get another call from another city department. So I'm going out to Public Works in two weeks because the Director of Public Works called and said, "Hey, can you come do that de-escalation training that you did for City Hall, for Fire, for Parks, for the libraries?" So that's grown with that as well. And discovering all of those departments deal a lot more with our mentally ill people than I think people realize. They're often the first responder out, not a responder, but they're the first one out in the parks or the libraries, and they get zero training on how to interact with people, who to contact. So I've been pushing that referral process of like Wairland County mental health crises, how to call 988, how to do this, how to de-escalate, or not to de-escalate and walk away and call for a resource. They've seemed really appreciative of knowing that information and what's available out there. So I'm enjoying it.
Counsel?
It's fun.
Thank you so much, Kirsten. Kirsten, Counselor Novak was first, and we'll, Counselor Montague.
Hi.
Counselor Kupczynski.
I just want to say I have an awful lot of respect for you, especially after this presentation. I did beforehand, but seeing what you do and what you deal with, and one question that came to my mind was, who cares for you? And you pretty much answered it in a sense that you have a team that, so I'm glad to hear that and that you're working together and that you can help each other.
It's a good thing, yeah.
Yeah, I'm really glad.
We consult daily on the phone with colleagues daily.
Yeah, and I'm also glad that you mentioned the libraries because we know sometimes folks hang out there, especially in crummy weather, and anyone who's on staff there should be trained. So I just want to say I appreciate you both and with what you're doing. And, you know, if the day ever came when we could have more than one of you, that would be swell.
Well, and the APD family is fabulous. We're very supportive of each other. We debrief constantly, and it's a great group of people to work with.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, Kinsey.
You can pull it towards you.
I can pull it, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Are you good, Counselor?
Yes.
Good. Counselor Montague.
So I echo what Counselor Novak said, really appreciate the work you're doing in the community. And not to add to your to-do list, but I don't know if we haven't included the bus drivers in that training, that would be an excellent addition, I think.
That got brought up to me last week when I was here at City Hall, they brought that up.
Yeah, because we, from different conversations we've had, they also are on that kind of front line. And then the other, the question I had was, if Lynn County sheriffs, do we know if they have a position like this? And if not, are they adding one?
I'll let our colleagues who are presenting behind us talk about that, but the nice thing about creating this position is it freed up resources for the remainder of the county. And they can talk about how they use that. But we have overlapped on occasion. In fact, Kirsten was just telling me about getting a call from a Lynn County deputy, he said, "Hey, can I run something by you?" So, again, it's, just because you live outside or work outside the city lines doesn't mean we're not going to help. So we're all trying to do the same thing together.
I just hear a need for more of that, and if we, you know, if that can't be done within the city, it would be great if the county could do that, too.
It's a definite need, and it's helpful if we all get out of our silos and play together, right? It's super important because, you know, APS and libraries and AFD and all these different agencies are dealing with the same people. So we need to be able to communicate freely, to work together freely, to help each other out, to get to the common good of helping that individual out. So enjoy it.
Thank you. Counselor Kupczynski?
I'll also echo what Counselor Novak said in that you're kind of the overarching ombudsman caregiver for the entire city. So there's always been, there's been lots of stories over the years how caregivers have come under a lot of stress. So back to what Counselor Novak said, make sure you take care of yourself also. So thank you for what you're doing.
Counselor Smith? Thank you.
Simple question. Who was number four in the team? It's you, Chris, Hillary, and?
Madeline Stone with Adult Protective Services.
Thank you.
Yes.
Counselor Newton?
Well, Marilyn took one part of my question, which was clarifying who the Fab Four are. Then my other question was, I'd love to attend one of your next presentations. If you'd share the details with us via email, I'd love to attend.
Perfect, will do, will do. Thank you.
Counselor McGee, do you have anything?
I don't. I just want to say I have been privy to her work, having taken the Albany Police Citizens Academy, and I know the work that she's done, and it was great to hear from her being even better now. So thank you so much.
So I would like to say thank you, Counselor McGee. One of the things that I heard from Counselor McGee that I hadn't heard ever before a few months back was check on your strong friends. So let's make sure we check on her and the team that she works with.
They are.
Okay. Thank you for giving me that nugget and not taking it from me. So thank you, Counselor McGee. Is that it?
No problem.
Any other, any other questions, Counsel? Chief, Kirsten, thank you so much for your presentation today, and keep up the good work.
Thanks.
Next on tonight's agenda is Benton County Coordinated Homeless Response Efforts. Julie Arena will be a verbal presentation with a PowerPoint. Oh, Lynn, I'm sorry, Lynn County. Oh, to part two. That wasn't called out, my bad. So Lynn County Mental Health will be speaking to us today as Nova Sweet and Tanya Thompson from Lynn County. My apologies.
So I'll just, I'll start. My name's Nova. Nice to meet y'all. I am the current Lynn County Crisis Team Supervisor. I've been in this role for about a year and a half. Prior to that, I worked on the Crisis Team for four-ish years. Kirsten and I used to work together. And so I, since coming on to this role, have been in charge of the vision of 988. Do you all know what that is? All right, so 988 is a federal movement to separate mental health calls from emergency calls. So police can go respond to people who are a safety issue or some sort of a criminal justice process, and 988 mental health workers can respond to 988 calls. And so each county is responsible for figuring out what that looks like. So I started as a new supervisor, and that was my task. So you have a packet in front of you, which I'm not going to go over all of this. However, wanted to bring your attention to the first page. For us to be fully staffed 24/7, we need roughly 20 full-time employees. We cover the entire county seven days a week, 24 hours a day, every day of the year. We only have 11 staff right now, and we still manage to cover everyone. So if you know anybody looking for a job. So Tanya is my boss, and she's going to talk a little bit about data.
Yeah, so one of the things, obviously, the Crisis Team is out and about. They're taking calls from law enforcement, community members, schools, and they're going out seeing people in the community. And one of the things that I wanted to give some data about is that the last year, from April 30th back to May 1st of 2022, they provided 1,437 services that were out of the office, in the office, either be face-to-face with somebody in the crisis or on the phone, they provided 3,332 services. In the last year, they saw 768 unique individuals. So obviously, some of those individuals are being seen multiple times in crisis. The one thing I wanted to call out, though, which is Lynn County is not, we're talking about crisis services today, but the Crisis Team connects these individuals to our services. And Lynn County Mental Health has an array of services from medication to therapy to group therapy to case management. And we also have to provide, you know, as people are moving through the system, let's say they go to the emergency room for an evaluation and they're taken to a psychiatric unit, we follow that person. We follow that person through our forensic legal system as well. If they go from the jail to the state hospital for aid and assist, we follow them. So there's a lot of care coordination and a lot of different types of services that we're providing. So the one data point that I thought was, I thought is actually larger than I originally thought it would be, out of the 768 unique individuals that we saw, 467, or 61%, actually were seen in our normal Lynn County Mental Health setting. So we were hooking up 61% of these people into our service array, which I think is amazing because sometimes people do have a hard time engaging into our services. And that is the Crisis Team. They do a lot of that engagement. You know, they're out there getting to know people and engaging them. I know that Nova's team is going to all the shelters on a weekly basis. She could tell you more about what they're doing, but it's that engagement into our services that's really important. So I just wanted to give those. And the other thing that I've noticed in our data in the last year, because of the increase of the mobile and the 24/7 two-people teams, is that there has been actually increase in our services outside of our office. So we're seeing an uptick in seeing people, which is really good, too.
So our Crisis Team, we hit all the shelters, not only here in Albany, but Sweet Home. We also interface with the shelters in Corvallis. We are connected with all the law enforcement agencies. Every law enforcement agency from OSP to APD has a pager number of ours where they can contact us 24/7, at least to talk by phone about something. From 8:30 in the morning until midnight, seven days a week, we are able to respond in person if a law enforcement agency asks for that support. Likewise, for 988 calls. So we have calls coming in from law enforcement, we have calls coming in from 988, we have calls coming in from community partners all over the place. And I do have a phone number to share with you guys that is not a public phone number, it's a community partner phone number. If something happens with you all, you need to get to us right away. So I'll give that to you after a bit. We, so we're responsible for responding to any sort of Lynn County resident at the three area hospitals that are suicidal, homicidal, or cannot take care of themselves. That means we go to Good Sam in Corvallis for any Lynn County resident. Benton County does not come to Lynn County to see their residents. We also, like I said, do the shelters, and we do pre-planned outreach for people of concern where we have neighbors, some sort of somebody who's calling and saying, "Hey, can you reach out to this person? They live in this area." So we do all that kind of outreach. There's a couple pages in here on services that we give clients, and then there is a couple pages in here on how we collaborate with community partners. In fact, if you look on page nine, that's where the phone number is. I also have a one-pager that gives the phone number and an email address if you guys want to email us concerns. We just want to be available as much as possible to support you all and our community partners to help our clients in need. Lots of the things that Marcia and Kirsten shared are similar things that we provide. We intersect in a lot of different ways. I, too, go provide trainings for the library, I, too, go provide trainings for the shelters, all those things, but it's just a different lens. So, yeah, there's a lot of need out there. And, yeah. Do you guys have questions?
Just a possible opportunity, I'm thinking for the whole process we've got here, they're training a lot of the public staff and everything else. Is there going to be an opportunity possibly to have organizations that might have interaction with some folks with mental crisis that could have some possible training on the side somehow, somewhere?
In private companies, like, okay, that makes sense.
So right now, for us at least, we have several outpatient clinics working with kiddos in crisis or suicidal that have kind of caught wind to what we're doing, and we're constantly getting emails about, "Hey, can we meet up? Can we talk about safety planning? When do we need to know to call the police? When can they go to your guys' place?" All that stuff. So it's kind of catching on just word of mouth. But, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Montague?
Yeah, like, I was just thinking, like grocery stores and like different areas that maybe get hit a little harder than others. But one question I had was, do you do that peer support model that the APD kind of does with the Sheriff's Department, or?
So when Kirsten was on our team, that was what she was doing. I, as far as our team, we have two debriefs a day where we're constantly taking care of one another because it's very stressful. But as far as an official model, that would...
Yeah, we have a critical incident review that we do for higher level incidences, and that, there is a debriefing with that to support people that are going through that. But the Crisis Team does, on a daily basis, they work very closely together because they do know that they're involved in a lot of triggering events.
Right.
And you talked about the Len County Sheriff, too.
Yeah.
I could kind of maybe touch base about that, because we do have a relationship with the Len County Sheriffs. We have Misty Stebbins, who is our mental health worker that works in the jail. We have a forensics team that works pretty closely with the Sheriff's Department. And then the Crisis Team is working with law enforcement to take calls in the community, and have actually done several really cool things recently with the Len County Sheriff Department in outreach with some individuals. So we
Excellent.
We do work with them.
They're catching on. So we're speeding up our response time. So we've been able to get to Brownsville in a reasonable time to help a sheriff, help somebody who's suicidal, things like that. It's been pretty neat.
Great. Thank you.
Counselor Newton?
So I know that Len County is about 2,300 square miles, right? It's gigantic. And you briefly just touched on, you know, response times out to Brownsville, and you mentioned previously that you work with Sweet Home, Albany, and even out to Corvallis. I was curious about, you know, some other areas. Are we out in Lake Stateon? Are we in Mill City? Are we in Lebanon? Are we in Harrisburg? What are we doing? And I know that you guys are such a small team, and again, Len County is so large. What are we doing to, you know, help other communities that are affected also?
We are trying to get out information for us to plan ahead so we can get there. That's one. Yes, we do Lebanon every week. We have a crisis mobile van. If anybody's familiar with Kahoots out of Eugene, it's kind of that model, only our van's way cooler looking. It's parked over in the parking lot over there. It's going to go off to the shop to get uplifted soon, but it will have a wrap on it that will identify that we're a crisis mobile team. And we'll actually start staging in places like Lebanon and Sweet Home strategically on certain days. We know Kirsten's schedule, so if Kirsten's working, we're going to stage out there because we know APD is taken care of. If she's not working, then we're going to probably stage here because they're a little more busy than the Sheriff's Office. We're also working on trying to make sure we have at least three staff between 5:00 and midnight, because we have to respond in teams of two. Again, this is no safety issues, otherwise the police are handling that. So we can have two people responding to a person of concern at Mill City while we have one person responding to Albany Hospital, because they also need our support. So this is all really good in theory. We're working on making it look good in practice, but we're excited. You have a bunch of crisis workers that love what they do.
Thank you. Next, counsel, anyone else? Dr. McGee?
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. So thank you very much for your presentation. It's a pleasure to meet both of you, and I will make sure I put this in my phone.
There's some brochures and cards as well for the public that we have over there, too.
Where are the cards actually stationed at and brochures?
So we brought you a chunk. If you want more, just email me and I'll get you more.
I just mean like throughout the community.
I'm sorry.
Like for folks to, you know, know that there's access to these services.
So every time I meet with a law enforcement agency or an officer, I give it to them. We're starting to plant them in our different offices with outpatient Samaritan places. So it's just going to take time. We'll have it on the side of our van once we have that. I also have these two one-pagers that I'd like to give to you if you could share, or whomever, to share with your team.
Yeah, chill.
That will be helpful to you guys if you come in with somebody in crisis.
So one of the things that I would ask, I work with seniors in my business, and I have access to all the senior communities in town. If you'd like to make sure they get the information, I go visit with them, so I'd love to do that for you. So I can, we'll get meet up and give me a bunch, but I also keep stuff like this in my office.
Sure.
You know, and I think more and more people need to be aware of this.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Again, next on tonight's agenda is Benton County Coordinated Homeless Response Efforts by Julie Arena. You're accompanied by?
Rebecca Taylor.
Hello, Rebecca. Welcome to City Council.
Thank you.
So we allotted 15 minutes for your presentation. Of course, we could probably go over and have questions for you. But please feel free to, if you have anything for us, to hand it to Allison, and she'll make sure we get it. And then you have the floor. Are you sharing a PowerPoint or something?
Yes, I will be. Thank you, Mayor Johnson. And you should have handouts in front of you. Do I have that right, Allison?
Yeah, right here.
Great. I will reference them as we go through, so you don't have to try to sift through them while I'm talking. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, and thank you for your patience as I get it queued up. All right. Let's see how that's working for everybody.
There we go.
Okay, looks great. Well, again, thank you for inviting me and my colleague, Mayor Johnson. My name's Julie Arena, I use she/her pronouns, and we are working as part of a new effort called the Coordinated Homeless Response Office in Benton County. And I'll hand it over to Rebecca to introduce herself.
Yeah, thank you, Julie. I'm Rebecca Taylor, recently hired to support the work that Julie and I are going to be describing here today, and my position is project manager.
Okay, we can go to our next slide. Nope, go back. There we go. Our goals today are going to be more high-level. Mayor Johnson saw a more like 30 to 45-minute presentation that we did for the Willamette Criminal Justice Council, I want to say last summer, and said, can you please come out to Albany and just share the work that you're doing? And we couldn't share everything that we're working on in a 10 to 15-minute time slot, but what we are going to share is, how did we get here? What's the history of the work in Benton County on responding to homelessness? How is Benton County coordinating our response to homelessness now? And then what are we working on now and going forward? But again, the handouts you have will give you more details than we'll be able to go into right now. So starting with the history and the foundation, I was hired three and a half years ago, but work has been going on on this topic for years and even decades. So you have a community progress timeline. Yours should be in color. I didn't print mine in color. But it gives a good snapshot of how many folks have been working on this topic for how long, so that we have a really solid foundation that we're standing on. Prior to my being hired in 2019, there was a ton of grassroots work with the Homeless Opportunity Action Council, HOAC, and they worked in partnership with our Healthy Communities Team at the county to do an update to a 10-year plan to end homelessness. The update was fantastic, but you have to have paid staff to work on plans. And so they started by hiring me three and a half years ago and creating the HOPE Advisory Board. It stands for Home, Opportunity, Planning, and Equity. And this is a joint advisory board with Benton County and the City of Corvallis, because these issues do not go across city guidelines, right? I mean, people are experiencing homelessness in Len County, in Benton County, in Corvallis, and in our rural areas. The HOPE Board went through about an 18-month process that I helped to facilitate, looking at all of our local data, doing research on best practices, what do successful systems look like? And then they prioritized based on some real key and core values, and that led to recommendations from the HOPE Board. And so let's see here. The vision for the HOPE Board was that everyone should have the opportunity to live in decent, safe, and affordable housing. And how we get there were these 12 HOPE recommendations that culminated after about 18 months of work. There's a ton on this slide, and it's a little outdated, but this is how the city and the county decided to come together to form a pretty comprehensive advisory board with their sole purpose to provide policy recommendations jointly to Benton County and the city, in quite a few different areas of representation from different parts of the community. What guided the HOPE Board's efforts, I have to move my mouse around just a second. Thanks for your patience, was that they wanted to be data-driven. The city and the county really wanted this HOPE Board to be driven by our local data and not just reactionary to crisis after crisis. We did a ton of research on those successful systems, looked at our local gaps, and then quite a bit of community feedback. And that's really one of the key reasons that they hired a coordinator in my role. Public engagement, community meeting sessions, neighborhood associations, forums specifically for our Native American community, doing outreach in our rural areas. That takes staff time and coordination. And then based on all of that outreach and engagement, they prioritized by vulnerability, where are our most vulnerable folks? You know, if you don't have a locking door or a place to wash your hands in the middle of a pandemic, your vulnerability is different than if you're sheltered. And community safety for all. We had the highest community safety concerns in our population of folks experiencing homelessness, and racial and ethnic justice. We looked at our local data. The racial and ethnic disparities in our unhoused population were far greater than people who are housed and receiving rental assistance or vouchers or other types of help but are currently housed, even if they're housing insecure. And so that's what culminated in these HOPE recommendations, and that should be a two-pager that you have. Here's a snapshot of what they are. So the foundational recommendations were organizational capacity. We need people to work on this topic who are paid to work on it, because our nonprofit leaders and service providers are doing everything they can to help people. Funding, we got to go for state and federal funding. And legislative advocacy, because ultimately, these policy recommendations were to the Benton County Commissioners and the Corvallis City Councilors, and the recommendation was for them to continue to advocate at the state and federal level for more funding and more capacity. And then the 12 policy recommendations themselves are on the rest of that two-pager. If you're interested in what they were, they range from crisis response to shelter to permanent-supported housing, really that system-level approach. This was a nice visual that one of our communications coordinators came up with to show if we're going to have a coordinated homeless response system, that there are multiple components. It's not just shelter. You can't just add beds and expect that to really help people in a meaningful way. There have to be resources to access, supportive services, better data, and then coordination among all of them. So how is Benton County coordinating our response to homelessness? I'm going to hand that over to Rebecca, because as we hired her, we got more meat on the bones for how we do anything.
That's my nickname, Meat on the Bones. So one of the things that I think is important to note is, as the policy recommendations were an iterative process with the update to the 10-year plan, it was also a period of time in which both the county and city were understanding what their role in implementation of those policy recommendations are. And so throughout that process, identifying key components that the city and county can provide the community to move some of these policy recommendations, and a successful response to homelessness, and those key components are identified as offering leadership structure and support to provide system improvements across the entire system. Like Julie mentioned, our service providers, they, they have large organizations that they're trying to move forward, and so providing that system-level improvement, the coordination between each of the service providers. Also, a key component, as brought out with the foundational recommendations through the HOPE policies, was build sustainable resources and additional funding beyond the local level. So really being good stewards of the local funding availability, and then seeking out other opportunities. Also, a key component is central point of communication. A lot of the work you're seeing here on the slides is the benefit of having some capacity to create deliverables that are consumable by our community to better understand this issue. And then as we learn, too, from outreach and engagement, we are also learning how to better respond to the inquiries of our community around this important issue. So in that process of understanding the key functions or components that lead to a successful response to homelessness, the state provided an opportunity for communities to apply for, which is through House Bill 4123, for funding to support building this type of infrastructure in a community to provide the support to coordinate our response to homelessness.
Draw their attention to that one.
Yes. And speaking of a visual and a communication tool, we did provide a handout that just goes right over real quick about what the coordinated homeless response is. Specific to Benton County, the LOC, League of Oregon Cities, also has a really good webpage on this as far as other resources beyond just House Bill 4123. So in addition to us having a lot of good material through the update to the 10-year plan, along with the policy recommendations, the requirements that House Bill 4123 actually provides some accountability and structure and support to our community as we look at trying to create the, understand the roles of each of our players in the implementation of the policy recommendations. So the five-year strategic plan that's required by House Bill 4123 helps us organize the work that goes into implementing those HOPE policy recommendations. In addition to that, it provides a community engagement and a government engagement tool, one by requiring that member governments or agencies who, who sign on to support this coordinated response have a governing body that has representation from the key top administrative level and then an elected official to provide that cross-jurisdictional coordination. Specifically, House Bill 4123 was granted in regional coordination, and so this is a tool to serve that coordination. In addition to that, the HOPE Advisory Board serves as a, the community engagement body to continue this work, to make sure we're having that public facing and getting the, the feedback we need to do the work that's actually responsive to our community needs. So digging a little bit deeper into the central point of communications, in addition to having resources for people who need support, but also for our community to ask questions about where this, where are we along with responding to homelessness, dashboards with progress reports, community updates, but also the work that Julie and I do day in and day out of having this type of community engagement and outreach to, one, learn the, just sitting here, we learned a lot about the different programs you have here, and understanding how we can make those connections when we go back to our office. So that includes that regional planning and coordination. We've had a lot of great conversations and work through the cohort of pilot communities around what they're doing, trying to align those resources. And then again, just having that opportunity for community input and feedback, making sure we're keeping a good pulse on our community needs. And then another resource is just the deliverables that we have available in different social media campaigns to make sure that our entire community has access to this information. And so what are we doing with all this? I'll hand it back over to Julie to say some projects that we are working on right now to implement those policy recommendations.
Thank you. And I also want to give credit on this central point of communications, part of the HOPE recommendations saying we need more capacity. We hired Rebecca as a project manager. We hired a contracted grant writer to do some of the sustainable funding support, and then we hired a communications coordinator for the Health Department of Benton County, and half of her time goes to this. So I cannot take credit for any of these gorgeous visuals. She gets all of it. So what are we working on now and going forward? We have some new projects. There are too many for us to cover here, so you have some great handouts. Let's see here. There's one about the Crisis Center that should be breaking ground this summer. There is one about a Benton County code change that Rebecca and I worked on to allow vehicle camping at religious institutions in rural areas. And on the backside of that one-pager, you can see a picture of a micro shelter. That's another example. And then you have another one-pager about Project Turnkey that we worked on with Corvallis Housing First and the Navigation Center on the backside. But what we are going to give a couple examples of are those Resource Centers. So in Corvallis, a Navigation Center, and in South Benton County, a Resource Center. And the role of our coordinated office staff is to support these community partners. So I'll touch a little bit on that. And then as we do this work, we're working on our strategic plan. So the strategic plan provides that timeline and the framework to coordinate all of this work with our community partners. And so we're not just starting the strategic plan right now. We've been working on a lot of things, and now we're documenting them for the state and for the whole community. So the Navigation Center in Corvallis is going to be spearheaded by the Corvallis Daytime Drop-In Center that has been doing work in Corvallis to help folks experiencing homelessness or people who need a cup of coffee or a place to get their mail. They have a fantastic low-barrier model to help people, and they're right now going for funding from the state to expand and have a bigger footprint with sheltering on-site and become a Navigation Center. So our grant writer has been the one who's been most involved in supporting this project to put together materials, timelines, and budgets, and then Rebecca And then Rebecca and I have been involved in convening partners and helping to do research. A rural example is in South Benton County in Monroe. The South Benton Food Pantry has been around for years, and their fearless leader, Janice Cook, has pivoted to have it grow to become the Keppi Knack Knack Resource Center and have folks on-site who are from the Center Against Rape and Domestic Violence, health navigators on-site, people who can connect folks who are picking up their food box with other resources if they need them. And again, so we have connected Janice and others with providers and funders to say, what about having this person on-site? How do we leverage resources? How do we bring awareness? So inviting Janice and the Corvallis Daytime Drop-In Center representatives to the HOPE Advisory Board meetings to share it with the whole community. Here's what we're working on, and here's what we need. How do we coordinate? And then supporting with additional funding, our grant writer's been working directly with her to say, what are your needs? What are the available funding sources? How do I support you in documenting that? So we are going to pause here and invite up our colleagues from Community Services Consortium because we work hand in hand with them, and they are going to talk a bit about the services that they provide.
Okay, hello. My name's Kayla Armstrong. I'm the Deputy Director at Community Services Consortium, and we are a member of the MOU with HOPE.
And I'm Deana Eldridge. I'm the Housing Services Manager for Community Services Consortium. I oversee all the homeless prevention and homeless funding programs that CSC receives.
So in addition to homeless resources, we also have assistance with utilities. So we can provide assistance for individuals who have utility shut-off notices. We can provide assistance with food boxes through Lynn Benton Food Share. We have home weatherization that we can go in and determine an energy burden on someone's home and provide services to support them in that area. We have Head Start Preschool in Lincoln County. And then we have workforce and education programs as well, which assist individuals that are dislocated workers at the time or are working through an alternative form of education through GED programs. But the bulk of our connection is really within our homeless services or rapid rehousing, and that's where Deana's bread and butter is. So I'll let her talk a little bit more about that.
Yes. So rapid rehousing is the concept of taking people directly from a homeless situation and trying to put them back into permanent rental housing. That would be a different approach than, say, first finding someone a shelter bed, then getting them into transitional housing, and then after a period of time, finding them permanent rental housing. We, our niche in the continuum of homeless services at CSC is to take people directly from unhoused situations and try and get them right back into rental housing with supports, with case management if needed. We have short-term programs that do that as well as longer-term programs that can assist people for up to two years to become stable and hopefully, for those that need it, provide a bridge to them getting a voucher with Lynn Benton Housing Authority. So we also, during the pandemic, we received enhanced funding for emergency services to the unhoused, particularly sheltering. CSC doesn't own or operate any shelters in Lynn Benton or Lincoln County, but when we get these particular types of funds, we usually pass them on to our sheltering partners. So we have funded Second Chance. We have funded Coates Street Outreach here in Albany, who does outreach. And kind of we're proud to be one of the organizing partners for getting that program going and was very happy to hear them step up. So that is basically where we fit in. We provide this service that goes directly from unhoused to housed, and we try to support our partners who are doing the everyday work of sheltering people and providing for their basic needs.
Yeah, it's a great overlapping connection. I sit on the HOPE Advisory Board, and so we have the opportunity to work pretty closely with Julie and Rebecca on this project, and so we're really excited to be their partners.
Thank you. Counsel questions? Mr. Smith?
A question for Deana. Who are your sheltering partners in Benton County?
At this moment, we don't have any sheltering partners in Benton County. A lot of those sheltering funds have started to run out as COVID money has ebbed. We are, but in, during the height of it, we funded Chances Motel Sheltering Program in all three of the counties. We founded, or we funded Second Chance Shelter and really were there to help them transition as they took over management of that shelter formerly known as Science Victory.
Thank you.
And currently, we're very excited to be working on the Lynn Multi-Agency Coordination Team that is formed. Lynn County went for waivers under the Governor's Emergency Order addressing homelessness, and they were able to receive a waiver. And now we have a very great group of providers that meet regularly under the leadership of Eric Anderson from your Emergency Management Office and my Executive Director, Piggy McGuire as well. And we are putting together several projects from all over Lynn County, but including project proposals from the Street Outreach Team of Coates, Second Chance to expand and perhaps go into some different forms of sheltering for them, and Albany Helping Hands, who wishes to expand their beds, in particular for those who want to seek treatment for addiction issues and trans, kind of transition into recovery. So those are just a few of the many projects that are being put forth throughout Lynn County.
Thank you very much. Great, Counsel. I had RK, JM, SN, and Marilyn Smith. Anything else further? Thank you very much, ladies. Thank you all for coming today.
Thank you.
Next, next on tonight's agenda is the annual inflationary increase for system development charges and public works fees. Rob Emmons, page four through six of your packet.
Is that the? So, gentlemen? Okay. He looks familiar, that's why I was like...
Robbie, you have the floor?
Okay, thank you, Mayor Johnson. There we go. It's nice to be back in front of you again tonight. I'll try to get this microphone just right here.
You pull it towards you.
Yeah. So tonight, presenting our annual SDC and connection fee inflationary increase for public works. We usually come before Counsel once a year at this time, just to go through a work session, make sure the questions are answered, present what the inflationary increase is. And then there's also, in accompanying the inflationary increase, there's one other increase to our water and wastewater SDC charges that we need to talk about and see if that's another step increase to be one Counsel would like to do. So with that, let's go through, I have about five slides. Nothing new presented, all the information's in your packet, so that should go. There we go. So the inflationary increase this year is 3.71%, much less than it was last year. Last year it was 12% as we were tracking that, as we were tracking that through the last year. A little better?
I think it might be dying.
This a little better? A little better now? Okay, so...
Just try it now.
Okay. Any better? Testing?
Yes, much better.
Okay, great.
Call Faraway.
So, so we're tracking the inflationary increase throughout the year. I think in January, we were still up in the double figures. We were about 10%. Since January to April, it took a pretty steep nosedive. We ended up at 3.71% inflation for the year, so much more reasonable than it was last year. That's good news. So I do want to touch quickly on the inflationary index that we, that we use. We use the, and I'm going to say this quick, and I'll explain that, we use the ENR-CCI Index for Seattle. It's a quick acronym. Basically, it's the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index. And we use Seattle because Seattle represents and tracks the inflation for construction for the Northwest. So, and part of the SDC statutes require that we use a published index for the purposes of tracks, of tracking inflation in construction. So that's, that's an industry standard. Most municipalities use that index. So there's two categories of fees that will cover utility connection charges, which include the post-construction stormwater charge, and then system development charges. So the first category are connection charges. I don't want to necessarily talk a whole lot about the specific connection charges. I can definitely answer questions if the Counsel has any. Mostly focus on just the, what the fees are and that inflationary increase to those fees. So you'll see in the very left-hand column, those are the specific connection charges. The middle column are the current fees as they stand today, and the right-hand column are the fees adjusted for inflation. The bold numbers are the rounded numbers, and those are the fees that we would actually
Those increases weren't that big. Those were pretty small increases.
Yeah, just under 4%. So not, not a huge increase, which is good. So the next category of fees are the system development charges. Public works are responsible for three of the four system development charges we have, water, wastewater, and transportation. So our current, so the example that I'm presenting here, that's in the packet on the slide today, is for a average residential house. We could list other examples. They can be a little, a little harder to grasp. So basically, what we've used in my career is basically a single-family house. That's easy for folks to understand and to track and how that affects the economy, at least locally. So, so you can see the second column over are the current fees, and the third column over are the fees for SDCs, just shown to be adjusted for inflation. And the very right-hand column are the inflationary adjusted fees, together with the fourth step increase for water and wastewater. So I can go into a little bit of history of that. So for water and wastewater, we, in 2019, changed, updated the methodology and the project list for water and wastewater SDCs. That resulted in a pretty substantial increase for both water and wastewater SDCs, enough so that for water, the Counsel at that time did not want to implement that entire new fee and decided to phase that fee in in five equal steps. Not necessarily in five, in five years, but in five equal steps. And the same with wastewater. With wastewater, the fee incrementally was much larger than water. So the Counsel at that time decided to create a funded and unfunded list for the water SDCs. Basically, they took the project list and lopped off some of the projects that we could deal with in the future, kept the most important projects, and decided to fund those and use those projects within the methodology to come up with the resultant fee. So that fee then was still a pretty large increase, and decided to, Counsel at that time decided to phase that fee in as well in five steps. So that's what we refer to as the step increases for water and wastewater.
So I have a question. You have, at the bottom of the page, you have SDC based on the 2,300 square foot, 2,325 square foot house, correct? What would it be for, say, a 1,500 square foot? It'd be nice to see the comparison of smaller home versus the bigger home because that's, how many homes are about 2,300 square foot in Albany?
Yeah.
Do the newer homes are typically 2,300 square?
Yeah, it's a, it's a good question. And when we went through last year and we adopted last fall the scaled SDCs to account for various size homes, when we looked at all the homes within Albany, the average was just over, actually just over 2,550 and just under 2,575. We rounded it up to 2,575 square feet. So that's not necessarily the typical home that's being built today, but of the homes in Albany, that's, that's kind of the typical size.
I know there's some, some builders are building smaller homes now.
Right, right.
That was the whole point of hearing. There's a smaller tier, okay. Thank you. I would just say that the public would see that and go, what about smaller homes? So it'd be a way to show them that, yes, we are building smaller homes at a lower price. It's revenue neutral. That's what my thing.
Yeah, it's good. So if Counsel wants to go forward with the public hearing and go with the increases, then in the Counsel memo coming up, I can list some more comparisons.
Is that okay with you guys? I think that'd be great. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, please.
So what I did next was... There we go. So what I did next was take a look at, of course, how we compare with other local cities. So you'll see the list of cities there. We have what our total SDCs are now. So if we were, somebody were to come in and develop now, our existing SDCs are shown along with the other cities. We have the median home value listed, and then the percentage of SDCs of that total home cost. So you see that they're anywhere from 6% to 3.5%, something in that range. So Albany is shown in there three times. Our current fee, our fee if we only go with the inflationary index, and then the fee if we go for the inflationary index, plus the fourth phase step for water and wastewater. So anywhere, that's anywhere from 4% to almost 5% for Albany.
Counselor Smith has a comment?
I really appreciate this table. It's one of the most valuable financial displays I've seen in a long time, easy to understand, and it's, it's really easy for me to see what other communities are charging compared to us. You're getting a bargain if you buy in Albany. That's what it says to me.
Yeah, yeah.
Even taking it stronger is easier to build.
Yeah.
Right? So supply we have, you know, we need supply. And mayors are talking about it all over the state. We have a childling shortage, but this demonstrates that we're, we're planning to do something about that. I thank you for this. Any other councils have a comment? Go ahead, please.
Oh, there we go. That's actually it. So any, any questions I can answer? I'd be happy to.
Counsel Newton, anything? Counsel McGee, anything?
Nope.
Counsel Kapsinski?
Well, but all I would ask is you put the, add a couple more examples, and I think that'd be really beneficial to the community at large, and I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
Next on tonight's agenda is, uh, oh, Director LaDain with the Parks Systems Development Charge Rate Setting Discussion, page seven through nine in your packet. Is she joining us virtually?
I'm here.
Oh, she actually showed up.
Thank you for showing up in person and online. I appreciate it. All right, let's see. Everybody can hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you so much, mayor and council, for the opportunity to come and chat with you today. I am going to share my screen. Oh, sorry, silly me. I should have shared it on Zoom first.
Oh, my gosh. Lakers are going to eliminate tonight. That's my favorite team.
All right. Now, thank you. So how we got here? I am lucky enough to be following Rob and chatting about SDCs, um, but this is a little bit of a long, uh, time coming for this conversation in regards to our department. So to give you a brief history, as we have three new members on council, back in January 2021, uh, council passed our, uh, updated parks master plan. At that time, an updated SDC methodology was proposed, but not passed as that council wanted to see a methodology that would help to support more affordable housing, smaller houses. So we went back and did some retooling and we came back in May of last year. Um, and that council, uh, updated the new methodology, which is great. We talked about updating fees and fees were not updated at that point because there were some concerns, some concerns over housing affordability still, as well as a residential or non-residential rate. So that's just kind of a brief overview as to why you're hearing me talk about rates independently today. So what is an SDC? I know we've heard about it before, but just as a reminder, it's a one-time charge assessed on new development to pay for the costs of expanding public facilities that result from growth. This ensures that the city's quality of life keeps pace with growing and changing communities. Our, with our new methodology, um, our now current methodology, some good things happened as we were able to incorporate a reimbursement fee, which for the first time allows our department to collect funds to use on current parks and amenities that greatly need updating to meet the, the needs of growth since that park or facility was put in however many years ago. Additionally, the new methodology allows for annual indexing, which will be wonderful. It'll allow for more, um, uh, methodical, uh, efficient ways to increase yearly as opposed to me coming back, well, whoever, uh, many, 22 years from now saying, hey, we would like to increase fees. Two things that were, uh, discussed in our last conversation, um, but we are not moving forward with at this time or until I hear otherwise from council, uh, was including a non-residential SDC rate. Many communities are starting to, uh, include those to help spread the burden to not just houses, but also industry that's coming in. That was not something that was looked upon favorably at the last time, so that is not included anywhere in this recommendation. And there's something else that gets folks a little bit tangled up is the idea of max allowable. So, um, in our long list of wants and desires from our community, to get to that, uh, in your methodology, they make a calculation as to how much money would need to be collected for each new house, uh, in order for you to get there. That max allowable, while we weren't encouraging folks or council to recommend that for every single home, uh, that was something that made a lot of folks uncomfortable. So you won't hear me talking about max allowable in this presentation. Yes, um, I guess I should mention, our current rates since 1993 have only been increased five times, five times since 1993. And the last one is in 2001. So if you built a home in 2005, 2010, 2015, 2022, you are being charged the exact same amount as you would have been charged back in 19, uh, 2001. So that's why we're here, because we need to, we need to fix that. So our current methodology, as I mentioned, council wanted us to find, uh, wanted to have a methodology that made it more favorable to build smaller. And so we went back and with our consultant, they found that people per household does drive usage. And so this in front of you is a scaled approach. These are just some examples of square footage, um, but it's equitable, it's defensible and it's faithful to the data. And so the new methodology, if you build a 500 square foot home, whatever this council decides to place as the fee, um, 48, you know, you, you have a far better discount if you build smaller. So only at a 3,000 square foot home would you, you know, uh, have the, the fully quantifying rate. Sorry, I'm trying, not using the word fully burdened is making my brain apparently a little bit fuzzy.
Maximum allowable, maybe?
It, well, yeah, well, not maximum allowable as, as, uh, well, if we decided to go maximum allowable and charge the $10,000 plus per home, if somebody built a 500 square foot, yes, it would be 48% of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
So just to kind of put into perspective where we are right now, in the next 10 years, Albany is expected to grow quite a bit, over 10,000 residents, over 4,000 employees. Additional parks and trails and amenities needed. In East Albany, we're looking at three parks and a trail system. In South Albany, five parks and a trail system. And West Albany, one park. And then additionally, we already have 32 parks, five trails, two pools, 22 sports courts, yada, 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 that already need to be brought back up, uh, so that we're meeting the, the growth that currently exists and that has been infilled in since they were created. So, um, yes, residents in these areas are going to want to come to our facilities and amenities just as folks in our currently, uh, in our current areas. Which brings us to a question that we get pretty often, um, and that is asked me multiple times, is you're under resourced now, so why in the world are we saving to build for new parks and trails? You can't take care of what you already have. Great question. What it comes down to is all the things you see listed here, livability, equity, economic development, health and wellness, protecting our open spaces. Many times in developing communities, the only time you're going to find green space is if it's owned by the city and it's a park in its place. Enhanced bike and pedestrian connectivity. And all of these are themes that are mentioned, not only in our 2021 master plan, but in the research for our city council strategic plan that we've recently gone through, as well as in the 2021 and 2022, if I were mayor, uh, folks out there. Parks and green space are very much talked about quite often as to what makes a livable community and a community that our, our, our children want to grow up in and stay in. So, um, so that's why, if we don't do it now, when the time comes, we're not going to have resources. Those new areas of town are continued, going to continue to be absolute deserts when it comes to green space and parks. And so if we don't make a change now, there's, we're really shooting ourselves in the foot and our kids in the foot. So to give you an idea as to what some of these funds are going to look like, um, in our master plan, uh, there is an outlined, um, you know, uh, over almost $50 million worth of improvements that the community said, yes, they would like to have. And while we know this is ambitious and not going to happen, the fact that we have over $3 million in our current balance, and this is before we pay for Meadow Ridge Park, which is going to be about $1.8 million, that goes to show you, that's not going to go anywhere. That doesn't, that doesn't buy any additional parcels, uh, in, in up and coming areas. That doesn't develop and that doesn't pay for any of the infrastructure. And so, yes, while we do have a little bit of balance right now, when you take into that account, it doesn't really buy you anything outside of two years from now. And so we really need to start putting money away. So our current fee, as I mentioned, this is ones that have been around since 2001. It's done by per bedroom and then square foot of living space. And on average, for about a 1,500 square foot home, which is what we use when we pulled the comparisons for our master plan, we're about $1,700, two to three times lower than a lot of our comparable communities. Once again, our rates have not been updated since 2001 and the rates shown to the side are since, from 2019. And many of these communities have updated once, if not twice since then. Rob talked a little bit about this and when we pulled the data, um, we're going to use, uh, moving forward for us, saying the average size home is 22, um, 2,250 square foot feet. Yes. So what we're proposing with this new, um, take at getting rates hopefully approved and updated is to say, let's just become comparable to our comparable communities. And for comparable communities, we use the, um, the mid and lower valley. We stayed away from Portland metro, as we know that it's a very different climate up there. So we looked at Corvallis, Eugene, Lebanon, Springfield and Salem. And if you look at what, uh, parks SDC for one of those homes would be for 22, five square feet, it averages out to $5,110. If you look at what we would charge here in Albany, it's under $2,500. So when you take that into account with the scaled approach, um, if we sent a 22, 2,250 square foot home at the little over 5,000 and using the, the proportions that our method, that our methodology set out and that are sound and defensible, this can go to show you how much the actual SDC charges would be if you build in these areas. With that said, the, the methodology does allow that if you build an 1,127 square foot house, we can type that in. Well, I say we, the brains at B and maybe Rob back there, whoever actually does the, the billing for it would be able to plug into a calculation, um, spreadsheet, how many the square, how many square feet are, and it would come out with your very specific total. So it's not between 500 and 1,000, it's this. It is, it is very much attached to the square footage. And this will be plus in annual indexing. So what does this potentially look like? Uh, on May 3rd, our Parks and Recreation and Tree Commission, uh, they met and unanimously voted to recommend to you, this council, to accept and approve the proposed rates when they come back. So today is an opportunity for us to, for me to present and for you to ask any questions regarding what's, what's being proposed. And then the hope is that I'll get feedback from you all to say, yes, go ahead and put this forward for a public hearing, which I'll advertise for by the end of the week. And then you'll see me again, um, back in June 28th for a public hearing and hopeful, good, robust conversation, uh, and hopefully an adoption of these fees. It's a long time coming and there have been multiple attempts to get fees updated since 2001, but either due to the climate or, um, council, it just hasn't been, it hasn't been prioritized. And I think we're to this point that, uh, for the last three years, I've been trying to talk about this, um, and we're not, i- it's our time to have this conversation because it'll really impact how we move forward with planning. So, um, so yes, I don't want the great to be the enemy of the good. In my opinion, this is a good solution. This is a good compromise and one that will get us going in a far better direction than we currently have, are and have been. So I welcome any questions at this time.
Council, um, start with, let me start with, um, Remisia McGee, cause she's been waiting on the line. So you have anything for us, Dr. McGee?
Uh, not at the moment.
Okay, I'll come back to you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Director LaDain, uh, I'm very happy to see the South Albany area because that's just now starting to be breaking ground on some of the living, living units there. And if we can somehow adhere to the South Albany plan, uh, that's just, we're planning for the future and budgeting for it. And I think it's absolutely necessary to keep a livable community, to have parks and recreation. So I'm all, I'm all in on it.
Counselor Newton?
So first I want to agree, you know, you need to build it and they'll come, you know, I remember about, almost a decade ago, when my husband and I were looking for a house, we looked at all the parks that were around, um, are, are the home that we were looking at purchasing. And it's actually where we ended up purchasing where we were at. And, uh, I am curious if you know, uh, if you recall from the previous presentation with, um, prior council, um, the reasoning behind the non-residential, um, SDCs? If not, the date, and I'd love to go and listen, um, to what that might be.
Sure, I can provide that, uh, an overview and I can also follow up with the, the transcript. Some of the concern was, you're not out there at our parks clicker countering? Who comes in and saying, ah, are you an employee or are you a, a resident here? And so across, in, in the world of SDCs, they use a specific calculation to determine adjusted use. So I think it's per nine, nine employees equal roughly one full-time residence usage of a park. And there was some concern that, um, while yes, folks in our businesses use the parks, it was maybe overstated with that, with that methodology and that we would potentially be hindering, um, development coming into town by attacking this on when, when potentially their employees, um, would not be using the parks and, and facilities as much as, as the broader SDC methodology indicates. Does that help?
Yeah, and if you have the, um, transcript, I'm just curious, I want to understand.
Sure, I can send the dates.
Thank you.
Counselor Monogue, you have something? Counselors?
I was just saying, I remember, uh, I was sitting in the audience during that one and that was a pretty summary of what the discussion was.
Counselor Smith?
Thank you for bringing that up. I was thinking the same thing and I would like a refresher. To me, the, the non-residential component of an SDC is akin to, um, spreading general fund, uh, receipts across, um, you, uh, payer, payers who are not necessarily taxpayers. It, it spreads it to people who are actually using the system, but have not had the opportunity to contribute to paying for it yet.
Council? So we will see you on the 28th. Oh, thank you, thumbs up.
Thank you.
I like the examples you showed, so I greatly appreciate that. Next on tonight's agenda is annual inflationary increase of planning fees. David Martineau, page 10 and 12 of your packet, 10 through 12 in your packet.
Good evening, mayor and counselors.
Hello?
So we did prepare a memo and an exhibit that shows what the proposed fees would be. The fee methodology that we use is based on a methodology that's been in place since the year 2000. And what we do is we look at the consumer price index of each year for wage earners. And, um, so from April 2022 to April 2023, the increase in the CPI, um, W is 4.62%. So, um, that's about half of what it was last year. Last year, our fees went up 8.93%. So it's nice to see that that rate's starting to come down a little bit. So that's what you see here on the table. There's the current fees that are struck out and then the proposed fees are shown in red. And if council does decide to approve the fee, uh, rate for, uh, this, this year, it would take effect on July 1st.
These increases don't look big at all. The increases do not look big at all, they're small.
Yeah, they're just, they're only going up by 4.62% this year.
Council, do you have any questions for David? Counselor Monague?
I noticed in the packet it said that will increase the general fund, um, by increasing these fees. Is that accounted for in the biennium, biennium budget? Those increased revenues?
So yeah, the, uh, the increase that we would see in this would be based on the average, uh, rate of application fees that we get each year. And if we held year to year, that, the budget would increase by 4.62%.
And we accounted for that in our budget? Does anybody know that?
In the scheme of things, um, with the amount that we get each year in application fees, um, I can provide more solid numbers the next time we meet on this, uh, but we make about 100, about 100,000 in revenue on application fees a year.
Oh, okay.
And so it's, any increase like that to the budget would be negligible.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Sure.
So that depends on the size of the, of the project, correct?
Right, yes, it's the size of the project typically, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other counselors? Counselor McGee, you have anything?
Uh, no, I think he answered. I was going to ask about the increase being in the budget, but I would like to see the hard numbers, if you can bring those back.
Thank you very much, counselor. Any other counselors have anything? We'll see you on the 28th.
Okay, June 14th is when we plan to come back. Thank you.
Next on the council's agenda is Jonathan Balkema is going to bring to us the Albany Municipal Code Title 18 Building Code Administration on page 13 through 52 of your packet.
Good afternoon.
Really?
Small little section, yes. So as my memo had said, uh, the majority of what we were looking at was, uh, council previously had moved, uh, 1830, which was the portion of Title 18 that went to the police administration, um, during the recession era. that went to the police administration during the recession era. And they moved that to, I believe, Title 7. So we're just kind of doing a, a general cleanup in there. And while we were doing that, it was also make some needed improvements because the mass majority of Title 18 hadn't been touched since 2006. So quite a few things were either out of practice on how we were actually doing things or in certain cases, we still had references to stuff that we just didn't do in the building division at all. So because they went to different departments or something like that. So we did some cleanup to that there. The key ones in there were the removal of the stuff that weren't in our purview. And then in a lot of cases, so we didn't have to come back as often because I would like to come back more often to make it cleaner. But since we are seeing legislative actions almost every year now, a little less referencing to us putting in the actual language into our title when it is related to statute, just referencing the section in statute. So that way we didn't have to verify that they didn't change a word that we needed to fix in our sections. And then one of the big ones is the last bullet there on the memo. If you guys move forward with approving our fee alterations later in this, in June, one of the things that we are doing in here is taking out the refund policy that has been in Title 18, which is 20% of the permit fee or the plan review fee gets retained by our office, which sounds great if it's a small permit. But when you look at like, say, a brand new commercial building and it could be $20,000, I don't need to keep 20% of that for an administrative fee. So we're separating that to actually being an administrative charge. From our previous discussion on that subject matter, and the main thing I wanted to talk about, and obviously I'm available for questions, you guys had suggested we look at options for certificate of occupancy. And we did provide an option in here for you. So if you look on page 30 of the packet, that is my suggested language, which in addition to the potential fee changes that we've previously discussed, also just putting a time limitation, the current version is basically building code language of six months, so 180 days. So that's one option that you guys have available. Again, that would be the one that we had originally drafted. And then per your suggestions, we came into a secondary option, which is on page 51 of the packet, which basically goes into allowing us to do 90-day certificate of occupant, temporary certificate of occupancies. And then basically they do a renewal after that for every 90 days up to basically a full year. And each 90-day renewal, basically it doubles again, per your guys' suggestion. So we do have that type of a tiered option. Like I said, my suggestion would be to go with the option on page 30, strictly because, you know, we generally don't like to use the building code as leverage for other departments a lot. And then with the changes to the methodology that we were proposing and then putting a time limitation on there, it should rectify the concerns that we had and the other departments had. We can always revisit it and come back to you guys later.
Counsel?
Didn't I also see a time limit on completing projects? That not extending for years and years and years, but eventually you finish it or you're, or you're just done?
So we've, since I've been employed here, since we've had a three-year time limitation on permits. So that's still remaining in the project. The language changed ever so slightly that basically you actually have to have progress inspections where there's actually work being done or you have to give us documents showing that it's beyond your reasonable control, that you're not able to move forward with the project. So one of the two options in, in that context. So that way there's a little more of the, you are working on it, you're not just sitting on it.
Do you, do you have quantifiable measures for what working on it means?
So for us, it's actually, so sadly, no, that's an ongoing fun debate. And we're part of an association for what we do. And one building official, it was, well, if the person goes in there and sweeps, it's not abandoned type thing. So for us, it's basically, we're getting to required inspections. So the, each building code or the plumbing code, all the subs codes have required inspection. So we're actually getting to that component. If I can do, and our office allows partials, it doesn't have to be the entire building. So as long as I can get a actual, you finished, say, your house, you finished an actual bathroom and I can do the rough inspection on there. Yes, you haven't abandoned your project type thing.
I'm thinking of a property in West Albany that I used to receive complaints about. Well, for years.
The, the bridge one?
Fifth and Walnut. I think it's still in the same state that it was 10 years ago. Thank you.
Counsel Kapczynski?
Yes, I guess it goes back to one of the conversations I think you had earlier with us. How do you incentivize, I guess is the right way to put it, somebody to actually finish the job? It's cheaper for them to delay it than it is to actually, even if they pay a small fine, to just keep blowing it off. Trying to figure how you get your arms around that, so.
And the way the language was written and it's still proposed, and even the way the generic stuff from the building code's written, it doesn't preclude you from, if you're, just can't afford to finish your project, you can still reapply and just continue out your permit on a new schedule. It's just, you're, you're actually moving through some motions.
You know the counselor? We'll see you on the next time you need to get approved.
Can I ask a little direction on which, because you will be passing an ordinance on?
30 and 50?
30 or 51, which direction would you like?
I would probably lean towards your expertise and say, go with the one you recommended. I mean, you probably know more than we do.
Which one makes the most sense for the city of Albany?
I think.
On your estimation?
So the one on 30, the one we proposed originally, still gives us six months worth of TCO, which in most projects should work. We've been working with our partner departments to make sure that they word their requirements in a way of, you know, maybe we're not giving TCO as early in the, in the process. It's, they're actually, you know, a little further along in the process if they're going to hold up full certificate of occupancy. So six months should in general be enough. And with the restructuring of the fee, how we're proposing it, if you guys approve that, I think those two should solve the concern from our vantage point. And then we can, like I said, we can always come back and revisit if we continue to see issues.
Counsel Novak?
Yeah, I have a question, and I think I may have asked you this the last time you were here, but I'm going to ask again because I, I, I'm not sure I did. How much or how many pages of code do we have?
A lot, so like one of our codebooks, which is a medium-ish size, large size, is about 750 pages.
750 pages of code to abide by?
And that's just one of the codes, yes.
Okay.
Oregon Building Code makes up about six codes.
And how much of our housing inventory comes close to abiding by?
So everyone that gets a certificate of occupancy abides by the code.
Can you say that again? I didn't catch it.
Every one of them that gets a certificate of occupancy from our office would abide by the code.
So how, how much of our housing inventory fits that? I'm, I'm going back to a conversation we had the last time you were here about the housing crisis that we're currently finding ourselves in.
So while the state program has been around since 1973, so for the mass majority of those, I would assume that they met code or the building department wouldn't have finalized them. But unfortunately, I can only talk about my time here since 2018.
I apologize, I must not be being clear. I understand that a house built in 73 would abide by 1973 codes. I'm saying with the changes to the codes that we have now, how much of our housing inventory that currently exists, whether it's from 1973, 53, 23, 2003, how many of our houses that we have can, can? Here, I wrote it down, hang on. Pass the codes that we currently have. If they passed in 73, can they, do they still fit? Do we?
They're not obligated to make any upgrades for their houses? So they're allowed to exist under the code that they were built under?
Okay.
Is a house that was built in 1973 necessarily quote unquote as safe as one that's built under today's code? Probably not, that's why the code evolves, but.
That's one of the issues that we discussed last time because you said we had a lot of houses that aren't safe. They don't have, they don't have a bathroom or a kitchen or something like that.
I, I think you may be referring to officers in Dell. We don't, all, all the ones that we would inspect would have to have bathrooms and stuff like that.
I think, are you asking if building code changes are retroactive?
Yes.
And I don't think they are, right?
Correct.
Okay, so any house that we have that had passed an inspection whenever it was built is still parting, part of our housing?
Correct.
Okay, that helps, thank you.
Any other counselor? Counsel McGee? Counsel McGee, you have anything?
No, I'm sorry, I kept trying to hit the screen. No, I don't.
No worries, thank you. Thank you very much. We'll get back to page one, give me a second. Okay, there it goes, right there. Next on tonight's agenda is business from the council. Since Counsel McGee has been waiting patiently, I'll start with you. Anything from the council?
I don't.
Thank you.
I'll wait till Wednesday, that's fine.
Okay, just wanted to, thank you. Counsel Kapczynski?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Counsel Novak?
Nothing.
Counsel Ramonagui?
I had a constituent call and she'll be here, I think, when we have our public hearing, but concerned about the, the change to the code to allow employee access to the Greater Albany Schools Bus Barn. It was heard through Planning Commission on Monday. I was there, so I kind of already knew the situation. But just be aware that there is a, quite a few neighbors in that area that are concerned and they'll be sending emails and probably be here for testimony.
About, about what again?
So Greater Albany Schools Bus Barn, where they have their buses. They want to, they have an emergency exit that's only for emergencies right now. But they want to change that to allow employee access through that same area. And there's concern in the neighborhood that that will increase traffic. So we'll hear that, but I just want to give you guys a heads up that there is some concern.
Would that be a city issue? That would be something GAPS have to deal with, correct?
Not the way you just described it, but it may be something. Yeah, but there may be more to it. So this is the, the older existing GAPS bus barn now?
Yes, existing, yes.
Because I know there's, they're going to get a new one if it's, and it's not our city employees that are kind of.
No, Matt's going to help.
It is the new one.
It is the new one? Oh, sorry.
We got somebody who's an expert coming up.
Yeah, you just, you were there, so.
Yeah, so, so the city council will be having a hearing, will there be a public hearing on modification to the conditional use permit that was approved for the GAPS bus barn? It's went through the Planning Commission. And one of the things that, what they're modifying is an emergency access that was approved as part of that conditional use. So they'll, they'll be bringing that forward, well, staff will be bringing that forward for a, a public hearing, I believe on Wednesday. So you'll, you'll hear a lot more. It'll be a de novo hearing, so I don't want to get into the great details, but I'm sure that we'll, it sounds like we're going to have some public comment, which is obviously welcome, so.
Counsel Smith?
My mind went blank, forgive me.
Well, Counsel Newton?
So I, this is a personal thing, but also public health related. So I brought some flowers from my garden. These peonies were actually planted by my grandfather at his, in his yard about 40 years ago. Unfortunately, my grandfather, these peonies, they are intensely fragrant and they remind me of him every year. And unfortunately, about six years ago, two days before his 80th birthday, he passed away from cancer. And he had prostate cancer. And I just wanted to encourage everyone to please, you know, do self-checks, schedule an annual appointment with your doctor. You know, the reason why I love, love gardening and love plants is because of my grandparents and spending a lot of time, you know, helping them out in their garden and getting a lot of corn pollen in my eyes because I thought that it was the best place for hide and go seek. It is not, it will, it will sting your eyes. But I, these flowers always remind me of my grandfather and I always just, I want everyone else to have their grandparents and their loved ones in their lives as much as possible. And please just do preventative screenings.
Thank you, Counsel. And last but not least is me. I have nothing for tonight. We'll turn it over to City Manager.
Thanks, Mayor. So first of all, Counsel Ramonagui's question about fees, planning fees and budgets, and whether they were accounted for in budgets. So we, you know that our fiscal policy requires us to estimate conservatively. So when we estimate revenues, we estimate them conservatively. And when we estimate expenditures, we estimate them conservatively as well. So operations in the planning department would continue next year, even if the fees were not increased, okay? But one thing that has to be remembered is that planning fees are, or planning operations are subsidized fairly heavily by the general fund. So if, if the planning fees are increased, then those increases would go into that fund and be available to lessen that subsidy that the, the general fund provides, okay? And essentially it would make it more, it would, it would be consistent with the idea that you would have growth pay for growth, okay? I, I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to take vacation for the last two weeks. It was a great break. And I also would like to thank Chris Bagley for standing in as Deputy City Manager during those two weeks. It's much appreciated. And then I, I have to, you know, I acknowledge that the council voted the Wednesday, May 10th meeting to fly the pride flag from the city's flag pole during the month of June, Pride Month. As an update, before we can fly the pride flag, or really any other flag than the, other than the National Ensign and the state flag, now willing to take a few steps. We're currently required by law to fly the POW and MIA flag as a third flag. We are not in compliance with that law because when, as you heard from, I think from the city attorney last time, when we did fly it, it was getting pounded on the, on the building and destroyed over time. It also was a third flag and this flag pole is not meant for three flags. Of lesser concern, but still a concern is that the flag pole is not sufficiently strong to support three or more flags. And when I say support, it's not a question of dead weight, it's a question of wind force against, against flags. But perhaps most important, what we need to do is develop a policy that allows for other requests for flags or other political statements to be flown or displayed. So in light of this, we're looking into ways in which to prominently display the pride flag in the lobby during June, although the concern regarding an established policy is still applicable. We can also look at installing a second flag pole so that we can fly various other flags, including the pride flag in the future, though that will, of course, not be a very speedy resolution. We're looking at all of these and we'll be bringing them back to the council. But in the meantime, I think you know, the city has a demonstrated commitment, demonstrated track record of commitment to inclusion and diversity and will maintain that commitment into the future. And as a matter of fact, Keith Kolkow, who is coordinating the Pride Festival, acknowledged how much, he might acknowledge the help of Chuck Marino in noting that, quote, "We couldn't do it without you." So, and that's coordinating the Pride Festival. So with that, is there any other questions or that's all, that completes my, my comments or my remarks?
No, Counsel Newton?
I actually have a question for you. So Director Ledain and I had an opportunity to discuss this and we were discussing the, you know, the, the, basically the square footage of fabric on the flagpole. And so then, just because I enjoy math, I started doing some calculations to calculate the potential wind velocity and location of the, like the direction of the wind to determine what would be the greatest amount of wind velocity that the, you know, I was making some assumptions with the flagpole and the materials that it was currently made of and of its installed base. So I was wondering if we had, I just love more information about how the flagpole has been constructed and what materials it's made out of. And also have we already determined the highest amount of wind velocity that would?
the highest amount of wind velocity that would cause the flags to either, even the third flag, the POW flag, to, you know, become tattered or ruined? And then do we have, I would just love also to hear more about our current flag policy. Are we removing the flags that implement weather? Is it something that we're currently doing in the evening, or are they staying up all, all the time?
Current flag policy is to fly the National Ensign and the state flag. If we were to be in compliance with state law, we would also fly the POW and MIA flag.
I apologize.
They are lit at night, and.
Oh, okay.
So, but there's no.
That's what I was wondering.
This is, this is the thing, is that, you know, there is no written policy, that's, that is a, just a compliance issue. If we want to fly flags that are other than government flags, we'll need to develop a policy. And that's independent of, you know, the physical dimensions or limitations of a flagpole.
Yeah, absolutely. From my rough calculations, I was seeing like 12, 13 miles per hour for wind, but also I was making quite a few assumptions with materials and installed, the installation of the, of the flag. So I'm, I just was having a lot of fun with math, so I wonder if we had done any of those other calculations as well. So thank you for the update. I'm, hopefully, we'll be able to fly this flag for one month in June.
That's my point, is we're not going to be able to fly it in June. We'll be able to display it prominently in the city hall lobby, and maybe even shine a light on it, but Kim is working on that now. But we, without it, and, and that's even something that we'll have to develop a policy for. We've already gotten two requests for flying other flags.
Okay.
Besides the pride flag. So this is a work in progress, but it's not going to be flown on the flagpole in June, though.
Okay, I'd be curious to see if any of our, I know we have several flagpoles in the city of Albany, I wonder if the Albany Police or Albany Fire would be willing.
And we've checked on those, those are designed for one flag, so that's, and they would require a policy as well. It's, it's not something that we can just, you know, escape city hall and go to another flagpole and do it. It's all city, city government property.
So Counselor Smith had something?
My understanding is that the hardware on the city hall, city hall flagpole is only designed for three flags. There is no hardware for a fourth flag.
Well, you know, there are, there are, there's a lot of things here. There could be, it could be a hardware issue, it could be a windage issue, it could be an issue of simply that the fourth flag is so far down that it becomes a target. There's an issue of half-masting the flags, so there's a number of them. Kim, please.
If it, if a fourth flag was in position, it wouldn't be very far off the ground, and I had a report from a constituent today that they had been contacted by someone who was going to come and tear it down if it was there. Just passing that along.
They would face up to 30 days in jail and a $1,500 fine. Is that correct, Sean Kidd?
If they were, if they were to steal it and they were charged with theft three, it's up to 30 days in jail and a $1,250 fine.
Thank you for the correction.
I think it would be helpful to, to do away with this, we wouldn't be having this discussion if we had a policy in place.
And I request that. I've requested that already.
And we are working on that.
Director LaDain?
Oh, I was just going to comment on the hardware. At this point, we in the past have flown the POW, MIA flag, but it has snapped the rope, as well as been tattered, and has been ripped down at another occasion as well. So that's why we stopped flying the three flags and just went with the two as it was under the square footage that it's designed for. And so if we, if caution in the wind, we would have to figure out different mechanisms to purchase for getting attachments for, for an additional flag, as right now, it's just set up for two.
Anything else, Peter?
No, thank you, Mayor.
And with that, I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.